No participation, no in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. People who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so by finding the meeting at www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. Before we go to that first item, Karina, has there been anything about not doing meetings on Zoom, having the green light to go back to the town hall?
I haven't updated since two weeks ago, but last I heard is that the state, well, last I know is that the state said you can continue to do Zoom meetings until July 15th and that the Board of Selectmen were going to discuss it in March at one of their, like towards the end of March. So unless the Board of Selectmen already discussed it and I didn't, am not privy to it, it's July 15th of this year.
There's also an issue with this SAM, remember?
Oh, that's right. Thanks, Colleen. Yeah. They're working on getting Southboro Access Media to be able to record the videos again in the hearing room.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. First item on the agenda is a discussion item, Master Plan Committee Update. This is Latrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Master Plan Committee last met on March 9th. We're almost finished with our final review of all the chapters. Our next meeting is April 6th. We're currently looking for feedback on the implementation responsibilities for, from all the stakeholders and I'll have that planned for the Dropbox for the next meeting of the Planning Board. We're also seeking pictures for the master plan and we'll be posting a picture contest on my Southboro Twitter, Facebook. So if you would like your photographic genius forever more memorialized in the master plan, send your pictures to either Catherine McKee, who's the Chair of the Trails Committee, who's spearheading this initiative, or you can send them to me. Kat will also be working to create a QR code. Hopefully we'll have a final draft of the master plan for town meeting. She's has a contact to create a QR code so people can access the master plan. Also Judith Watson, who's on the Conservation Commission, and she's the Vice Chair of the Master Plan and she has made tremendous contributions of her time and talent to the master plan, is resigning from the Conservation Commission as of June 30th, and I am tremendously grateful for her enormous contributions to the master plan. And that is all I have.
It's a lot. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Getting close to the end. The next item in the agenda, on the agenda is a continued public hearing. Hearings 325 Turnpike Road, Kent Foods Expansion, Major Site Plan Approval Continued from September 27th, October 18th, November 15th, December 13th, January 10th, January 24th, February 7th, and February 28th. And the same for the special permit, same location for lower impact development and same continued public hearings. So our understanding, my understanding that the proponent has requested that we take no action tonight other than to address their request for an extension of the approval period and then continue the public hearing. So we see on the screen their request to continue the hearing to April 11th and to extend the approval period to April 15th. So the first action would be to entertain a motion to grant the extension of the approval period to April 15th.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Lee Han, yes?
Very good. Next item would be to continue the public hearing to April 11th at 7:05.
So moved. Second?
And that was the hearings.
Yeah.
For site plan and one for the lid. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell?
Lee Han, yes?
Very good. We'll see them on the 11th. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. Hearings, 200 Turnpike Road, Snow Removal Landscaping Contractor Facility. Major Site Plan Approval and Special Permit for Lower Impact Development. These public hearings are continued from November 15th, January 10th, January 24th, February 7th, and February 28th. The current approval period for 200 Turnpike Road is April 15th. They have requested to continue this public hearing to April 11th with no actions taken tonight. So the next action by the board would be to entertain a motion to continue these public hearings to April 11th at 7:10 p.m.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
I'm sorry, Latrell.
Lee Han, yes?
Okay, our next item on the agenda is a 7:15 item. I got 7:08, so we, we can take on. How about the A and R, Karina?
Yes, I believe the proponents are here.
Which proponents?
We have.
No, for which one?
Oh, the A and R for 20.
Okay, oh, that's good. Okay.
Yeah, we have Zachary Bemis and Bill Pootree. So if you can elevate them, Colleen. Bill is at the top and Zachary's at the bottom of the list. If there's anybody else in the audience who wants to be upgraded for this, I know that this is, Phil Jenks is the trust of this property still. And I see him there. So if he wants to be elevated, he could raise his hand, but maybe he, I think he may just be watching. Colleen, do we have everybody elevated who needs to be?
I believe we do.
Okay. Don, would you like me to give a quick intro?
First, we'll say hello to Bill and hello to Zach and Phil. Is that the crew?
I see Zachary Bemis. I don't see Bill Pootree yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I sent him over. He should be there.
I want to make sure they're there before you speak, Karina.
Okay, I see Bill Pootree and I see Zach and Zach is still muted.
That's okay. Just saying hello to them. Hello, Zach. Hello, Bill. Go ahead, Karina.
So we received this application and filed it with the Town Clerk on March 7th. If you recall, we just recently had this property before us and the Planning Board endorsed a larger lot and cut off Lot 2A to the left of the screen. Currently, they're proposing to take the existing property and make multiple lots. A and R lots and Zachary's here, so he probably can speak to it best, but I want to tell you that I did review this plan. It appears to be in order. A couple of the notes were updated to reflect the number of lots, the property owners at the bottom. Other than that, everything as far as the data on the page remain the same. So if Zachary, if you want Zachary to continue to explain that, it'd be good.
He's welcome to. Otherwise, say that you're all set.
Yes, I'm all set.
Anything to add, Zach?
Yes, please. Good evening. Zachary Bemis with Engineering Design Consultants. This evening, I'm representing William Pootree, the applicant for this A and R. The last time we were in this neck of the woods on Meadow Lane about a month and a half ago for another A and R, we created lots 1A and 2A. You'll see those off on the westerly side of the Limits of Work, showing those lots as they were reconfigured based on that A and R plan. Now we're proposing the division of four total lots and this lots 3, 4, 5, 6, as well as the creation of parcel E. With the land that comprises the subject parcels, we have two different owners. We have land that's currently owned by William and Christine Pootree, as well as the land that's owned by Meadow Lane Nominee Trust. With the land that's owned by Meadow Lane Nominee Trust, that land is being subdivided into great lots 5 and 6 in their entirety, as well as parcel E. Parcel E is not to be considered a buildable lot. It is landlocked, you'll see. That area of land comprises existing soil absorption systems and is currently under an entire area of easement. So by simply taking it out of locusts and creating its own unique parcel, it'll be very similar to the same arrangement that Carriage Hill condominium has, that parcel K. That's the northeasterlymost parcel shown on this plan, but not part of locusts. As it concerns lots 3 and 4, lots 3 and 4 are created from combined plan of both owners in question. The little detail in the lower right-hand corner of the plan breaks out those parcels. Parcels A and B are to be conveyed to the land of William and Christine Pootree to create lots 3 and 4 as they're shown here on. I'm happy to field any questions. With that, I give it back over to the board.
Okay, thank you. Open it up to the board, Mr. Mills.
I have no questions.
Mr. Stein?
No questions?
Mrs. Latrell?
No questions.
Mrs. O'Leary?
No questions.
So anyone from the public, questions or comments?
See any hands?
Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to endorse the A and R.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We endorse the A and R as requested by the applicant for 26 Meadow Lane.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Lee Han, yes?
Very good. So the plan, Karina, is for the board to appear at the townhouse to sign the A and R and the form and then notify, who, Mr. Bemis, that it's been signed? Is that the way?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe we can get that accomplished this week, get all five of us to stumble into the town hall and sign this.
And we'll send out a reminder email.
Which we need. All set, Zach?
Yes, thank you very much.
All set, Bill. All set, Phil. We'll move on to our next agenda item. Okay, thank you. Thank you. It's now 7:16. We're able to open the public hearing for 154, 156 Northborough Road. Modification to a major site plan approval. Let's the town planner to read the public hearing notice.
It's the public hearing notice for modification to a major site plan approval, 154-156 Northborough Road Assessor's Map 70 Parcel 2. Per Section 174, Tenant Southboro Zoning Code, the Planning Board of the Town of Southboro shall hold a public hearing on Monday, March 14th, 2022 at 7:15 p.m. to consider the application of Michael J. Quinn regarding the property at 154 to 156 Northborough Road for modification to major site plan approval. This public hearing concerns the change from rentals to condominium ownership of 25,098 square foot of mixed-use garage contractor base, 20 units on the 4.65 acre parcel located in an industrial park zoning district. It's only chapter 20 of the Acts 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. A copy of the application can be viewed at the Planning Office at Southboro Townhouse during normal business hours or town website at http://www.southboroughtown.com/planning. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Don C. Morris, Chair, Planning Board.
Very good. Thank you. So Karina, start with the application, the date, and where, what, if anything, you have done with that? And what it consists of? The board is well aware of all of this, but we want to make sure that it's consistent with what the proponent and the public think is the status.
So this project was permitted in 2018 with a major site plan approval and a lid, special permit. It was constructed, it was sold to a new owner, Kane Built, who built the property and currently owns it. Recently, when it came time to get certificates of occupancy, the owner decided that he wanted to turn, instead of going with the rental unit approach, he wanted to go to ownership approach with condo units. So we asked town council's opinion as to whether or not they could get their certificates of occupancy based on the current permits that are in place from the Planning Board, as well as the ZBA, and he told us that they needed to mitigate the conditions of approval in the permits because they were so specifically written to a tenant landlord regime and not condos. So it was advised that they come before the board for a modification to the major site plan approval in order to amend two of the conditions that specifically speak to the type of ownership and make it more generic or condo unit approach, as well as one of the conditions refers to a protocol for the occupants, which was previously named as tenants. So now it's for occupants and ownership. So we received an application, filed it with the Town Clerk. The applicant sent out a butter notifications and supplied us with a draft copy of the condo documents. The information was sent to town council for review. And we are awaiting feedback from town council. One of the prime concerns is the landscaping that had not been completed in accordance with site plan. So there were some concerns with that. And do you want me to go into anything further at this point?
No, but let's, let's I'm going to go over what I think is the reason, is what, if anything, the Planning Board can do tonight. The the application that's been submitted needs to have the Planning Board vote to approve the modification. We could do that tonight, but we would be doing it in an information vacuum relative to our request, as we consistently do with condo-type documents. Send it to town council for review, and we don't have that information back yet. We, so it would, it would be my recommendation that we do not vote to approve the modification tonight. Once we get the feedback from town council, we could act appropriately. So what can we do tonight? There's another request in, from the proponent to release three units, to allow three units to be rented out, not as condos, but as a rental. And we have, the Planning Board, relative to an occupancy permit, we make a recommendation, one way or the other, or remain silent to the building inspector. So that's something that we could do tonight relative to the request to rent out the three units. However, we have, if we do that, if we decide to do that, we have some areas of non-compliance, especially relative to the landscaping. And learned later today that the building inspector, current building inspector, has not inspected the building since it was built. So there may be issues there, but we would still be able to, if we felt comfortable, to recommend to the building inspector to grant a temporary occupancy permit for three units. One step further on that would be making sure that the town is properly covered relative to the areas of non-compliance. And I would suggest, as we've done in the past, a, receiving a cash bond to cover any outstanding items relative to the current approval. Once that cash bond were, if, if the Planning Board were to vote tonight to recommend a release of an occupancy permit for those three rentals, it would be subject to the town receiving a cash bond to cover the outstanding items. I believe that those are the only actions that the board could or should take tonight. I guess we'll open it up to Mr. Quinn to see where he is relative to this. Mr. Quinn?
Mike, you have to unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Planning Board members. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So before us tonight, we have two requests, as you mentioned. One being the modification. Basically, the modification has to do with the Appendix A. And the Appendix A calls for the fire department and the building inspector to be notified when someone, when somebody moves into the building, whether it's an occupant, a tenant, owner, whoever. So we are seeking a modification to change the, basically two words that were in the original approved Appendix A. And the appendix, the original approved Appendix A called for tenants and landlords. And we're trying to, we're asking the Planning Board to adopt new language, basically calling those occupants and owners. That covers basically everybody. It's actually, we think it's better for the town because if, under the previous Appendix A, for example, if the owner wanted to move in, he's not a tenant, so he wouldn't have to do anything. So this, this covers everybody. So I understand you're waiting for town council's opinion on, I'm guessing, the language of that because it's fairly simple. What we did was just change the words from tenant to occupant and landlord to owner. The second reason we are here this evening, we are seeking occupancy permits on all the units. We have more than three now that, that, that we could fill up with tenants. We have a lot more than three. And we are willing to put up a cash bond for whatever items remain unfinished or in dispute. I understand there's some landscaping issues. We, I've been very transparent with that. I've been told the Planning Board, the planning, the town planner, excuse me, from day one, we'll replace them. And if we can't, we'll come back and seek another modification. The only reason why I would believe we couldn't replace them is because they weren't available. I know last fall, we tried to replace a whole bunch of them, the plantings, and only some were available. As you may or may not know, there were supply issues with just about every product out there. And we're not going to be surprised if there's some supply issues here. We did meet with Mrs. Latrell and Freddie Gillespie out there last fall, and I think we all were in agreement. We'd have another meeting in the spring and iron out the items that need to be replaced as far as the landscaping is concerned. You did mention the building inspector. We did have a final building inspection at the site. We have provided the building department with all the necessary sign-offs, including the plumbing, electrical, fire department. All the life safety issues have been addressed. The parking lot is finished and striped. We have all the signage up. So we don't see why we can't get the whole building released, subject to having a cash bond placed with the Town of Southboro. We had a, several months ago, we called for a final inspection and the current building inspector, Laurie Lavaldi, was out on a medical leave. And so her replacement came out two or three different times. And the last time he was there, he gave us a thumbs up and said, this is, consider this your final inspection. I'm satisfied. So that's where we are with the building itself. It is, it is 100% done except for any minor tenant fit-ups that, you know, some people want to buy one unit, and so we put up a, a non-bearing wall. Some people want to buy two units, so you don't put up the wall between the two units. So other than that, the building is done. So I'm asking the Planning Board to work with us to provide the mechanism to provide a cash bond so we can get this building released and occupied.
Very good. I'll open it up to the Planning Board for discussion. Mrs. Latrell?
Good evening. First of all, I would feel more comfortable hearing back from town council on the language, whether that satisfies what he's looking for or not. Be it simple or not. The, yeah, the landscaping for me is a huge issue. I've been out there twice with Mr. Quinn and Karina and some other people and once by myself just to see if anything had changed over there. The, so every time I've spoken with Mr. Quinn, he said that they will replace all the non-native species. And then we get a letter with the Asbeld saying that according to engineering design consultants who's speaking on behalf of Kane, that the landscaping is good enough as is. But I that's not satisfactory to me. We that's not satisfactory to me. We worked hard on that landscaping plan. They're natives for a reason. Low-impact development, uh, is supposed to leave the natural environment intact as much as possible and then mitigate for any destruction. And the mitigation in this case was native species plants, which have co-evolved with insects, pollinators for centuries. Um, and the cultivars just aren't good enough. There were beautiful cultivar winter berries there with huge berries on them, except for they were the size of golf balls and birds can't eat them. So they look good for people, but they're not helpful to the environment at all. And then, um, the most recent invoice that I saw today, uh, from last fall, I think, the plants are all smaller than what was on the approved site plan and smaller than what is required in our bylaw. So I continue to be concerned that there's, um, the desire to come into compliance with the landscaping. So I would definitely want to see, um, a bond to ensure compliance on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mills.
Hi, good evening. Um, yeah, I think I agree with Mimi in terms of the, uh, the landscaping, we did work very hard. We had multiple meetings on that and at the time it was, um, you know, cutting edge for what we're doing in the town, uh, for getting the native species. Uh, I would like to, you know, I, I know this building has been empty for a while and, uh, for the applicant and owner to be able to get some, uh, a tenant in there as quickly as possible, I think would be great, uh, for him and just to get some activity over there and, and get the property, um, moving and occupied. But other than what Mimi indicated, you know, I, I think if we had the bond, uh, would be great. Um, and just get, I want to be sure that the, uh, town council was comfortable with us opening up for, three tenants, um, as quickly as possible, even though, um, it doesn't seem like everything's tied up completely. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Houlihan.
Thank you. Um, so I guess I remain a little confused, um, particularly if the language, and we're still in the agreement, we're waiting for Attorney Tellerman's position on this, that we need kind of a, an update on the, the site plan to move to an occupancy, the condo association versus how it was permitted for rental. How that making three available now under a rent to buy, it just seems like it'll further complicate things. So I guess my, my opinion is that we should probably get the consensus from, um, Councilman Tellerman regarding, um, what we can do and what we can approve for if it's a simple language or if we have to go through the, the permitting process. And then I also would, so I, I'm the third to say that I'd like to have Attorney Tellerman's feedback. I would also agree to a bond. I worry about the landscaping design. And it is, um, worrisome, I think, that, as Mimi brought up, relative to the fact that, um, Mr. Quinn, as you represent, uh, in these meetings, how it's different than what's presented in the, um, submissions of ASBILs. So I think we just need to make sure that, you know, you're all talking on that side as well. I think we all want to try and make sure this is occupied and do the best for you, um, and your client as we do for our town. So, um, I think it's just mitigating these, these areas of concern. So I'm less likely to approve an occupancy this evening, um, but I'm fine with, um, suggesting a bond for the landscaping.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
I'm in agreement with the previous, uh, board members that spoke. I feel like we should have any legal loose ends closed out, rectified before we entertain the concept of, uh, release with a bond for the landscaping. Thank you.
So I think, Mrs. Houlihan, you indicated, based on what you said, uh, that we would take no action tonight relative to the modification and then relative to, um, releasing any of the units subject to receiving a bond. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Does anyone feel differently on either of those pieces? I think we're all in agreement that, um, there would be no action by the board tonight on the modification. Is that correct? Okay. And then as far as taking action on releasing any units, we have Mrs. Houlihan saying no action. Mrs. Luttrell?
Um, I guess I would need further information. I know town council opined on it, but it does seem confusing to me if we have rentals to own and what if the language hasn't come into compliance by the time the renters go to buy them. It seems confusing to me. So, um, I guess I'd like further information on, uh, if anyone else is clear on what town council's guidance was on that.
Don, could I interject one thing?
Yeah, yeah, Karina. Yeah, um, go ahead.
So, uh, inside plan approval section 174-10, very last item, um, in that, in our town code refers to, um, and I'm just going to read it verbatim really quickly here. It refers to certificate of occupancy, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So it says, um, 174-10J compliance. The issuance of an occupancy permit will not be given prior to the satisfactory completion of all elements and conditions of the approved site plan. A temporary occupancy permit may be issued after satisfactory completion of all items essential to public health and safety and sufficient bonding acceptable to the planning board is provided to the town to cover all outstanding items. So town council, um, responded with that. There wasn't a strong concern with, uh, a temporary certificate of occupancy because of the landscaping per se, because it, um, well, he didn't say because of landscaping, because the rentals would be under a current permit. So the permits that are currently in place, you know, allow for rentals and it's covered in that manner. Um, second note is that ASBILs were received and they're currently being reviewed by Fussin O'Neill. So we don't have a clear understanding of any other elements that may be, um, not in compliance in addition to the landscaping. So I just want those facts to be out there, that there is an avenue based on certain things. Town council wasn't, um, speaking about the landscaping per se, he, I believe he represented that because they have a rental regime in the conditions of approval in the current permits, the rentals would be okay. But barring any issues that the planning board had with, uh, conditions not met and a bond in place. All right. So, uh, and once we do receive the ASBIL report back, um, from Fussin O'Neill, who reviewed it to the site inspection and we're waiting a report, uh, we would have further information if there's anything else. And we did receive condo documents, draft condo documents that were included, in the legal opinion requested town council, uh, at the end of last week, along with the revised protocol and the information package that was part of this modification request. That's it.
So I'm leaning toward, uh, accepting a cash bond and sending a note to the, once, once we receive the cash bond, sending a note to the building inspector saying that we're okay with, uh, issuing an occupancy permit based on our end of it. We don't know the details. Mr. Quinn indicated that someone from the building department did a final inspection. That must be documented someplace. We don't, we don't have that in front of us. So there may be other issues that we're not aware of, but they're also not in our jurisdiction. But I think that at this point, we could at least start the process to get a cash bond into the treasurer's office, um, so that, and a recommendation to, uh, the building inspector, that from our end of it, we're okay because of the cash bond. And then it would be up to the building inspector to decide if she wanted to give temporary occupancy permits to one unit, three units, 20 units. So to me, uh, I, I think that's an okay way to go, go ahead, that we don't have to. If there were issues relative to the drainage, the pavement, the flow of traffic, the configuration of the building, that type of thing. But the main issue here is the, uh, plantings. And we have two things going against us right now. One is the weather and the other one is, uh, the industry, apparently. But with a sufficient cash bond, it would give incentive to the proponent to get that resolved, so they could get their money back. I'll keep this going. Um, Mr. Mills, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. I have nothing else to add.
Mr. Stein.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I have stayed my position. I maintain that I would be willing to entertain a cash bond proposition to release units, uh, if everything is cleared except for the landscaping.
Back to you, Mrs. Houlihan.
I am in agreement with Mr. Stein.
And back to you, Mrs. Luttrell.
So as of right now, we're waiting on the results of the ASBIL inspection from Fussin O'Neill. So there could be some issues relating to public health and safety that we're not currently aware of. I mean, landscaping's easy to see, but, um, driving by, I can't, you know, I don't have the expertise that Fussin O'Neill does. So I'm, I don't think I'm comfortable, other than, um, entertaining the cash bond tonight to, uh, give any type of okay for an occupancy.
Um, Don, I can just, just don't forget, there are some, uh, there's a hand raised for public comment when the time comes.
Okay. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is that the only action that the board, should take tonight is to either, um, ask the proponent for an amount of a cash bond that would be agreeable to us. And if so, um, ask the proponent to, uh, obtain that and submit it to the town through the, through the, uh, town planner. And that's all we would do tonight. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
So, yeah, I, I, my understanding was we were going to wait until the other, any legal issues were rectified before delving into a cash bond. So in other words, if it's just the landscaping, then we would discuss the cash bond.
I see what you mean. If, if it's just the landscaping, there's a, there's a value for that. If there's problems with the ASBILs, there's a value for that and so on. So to determine the amount of the cash bond at this time would be, um, wouldn't be the end of the world, but it leaves the door open for an insufficient amount. Let's, uh, someone still have their hand up?
Freddie Gillespie?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the South Broken Space Preservation Commission. And I did attend a site walk to inspect the landscaping with, um, Mrs. Luttrell and Karina Quinn, town planner, uh, and just when we're talking about the landscaping, to be clear, it's not just the plant material, if you're aware. The, um, lower-impact development permit had rain gardens on the plan, and at least one of them was maybe half the size of what was on the plan. And there may have been some situation with ledge that made it lesser. But certainly, and I understand calculations can be redone, but the permit as, um, right now, um, on the plan has a rain garden that's been put in at half the size. And that's not, in my mind, just landscaping. Maybe it is, but, um, I think it has more to do with stormwater and other issues than just, um, landscaping. And of course, then the landscaping there had plants that I know is upland and dry plants in the rain garden, which, um, so it's not just the cultivar issue, it's the placement of the plants, size of the plants. Um, this is not a minor issue. And also as far as the ability to source plants, if the right plants had been put in at the right time, you know, everyone who works with landscaping knows there are certain plants that are available in the spring. You plan your, your schedule to take, accommodate that. The spring plants you purchase and plant in the spring, the fall ones in the fall. And if you don't plant them, and then all of a sudden you have to do them all at one time, it's not because they're not available that you can't get them. You just, they're not available at that time. And I believe that was the discussion we had with Mr. Quinn about getting the ones they could in the fall and then doing the ones they could in the spring. So, um, I'm not aware that these native plants are subject to non-availability per some shortage. It's more per timing. And if the right plants had been put in at the right time, this wouldn't be an issue. So it's certainly something. Um, if there's a problem, I'm more than willing to help source plants, because I know where, um, you can get native plants on large-scale projects, not just small little home garden sites. So thank you. So I want to make those points.
Thank you. Anyone else? Karina, what's the, um, uh, date of, uh, the approval period for this modification? It's public here.
Oh, no, we didn't put it in there. So let me tell you. I was filed with the town clerk. Give me one second. So it was, uh, filed with the town clerk on February 23rd. The approval time period is 60 days. Uh, date approval deadline. Give me one second to calculate that. It's just not on the agenda per usual. Two, twenty-three, twenty-two, so so five days there, then we have thirty-one in March. That's thirty-six. Then we have March, April, thirty days. Sixty-six, so minus six days. I believe it's April twenty-four. Sixty-six, so minus six days. I believe it's April 24th. With a quick calculation.
And we have a planning board meeting on April 11th?
Correct.
So the board is within its rights to continue this public hearing with no action to the April 11th. Certainly, it certainly helped if by eleven, uh, April 11th, the path will be a lot clearer as to what's what is an open item or what items are in non-compliance. But hopefully, as Mr. Quinn said, the modifications are relatively simple. Town planner would give us the green light or make suggestions to get us to the green light to to grant the modification. And hopefully, that could be
I'm sorry. Yeah. And I think part of that is A, to get confirmation from the town council regarding the application itself with the conditions, the two conditions that need to be updated in the protocol. And then get feedback from the as-built inspection from Fuss and O'Neill.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Quinn.
So regardless of the modification, as I mentioned earlier, I have plenty of people that are willing to rent these units. You know, we've had all the inspections that are required to get an occupancy permit. So we're asking, seeking the, the, the blessing of the planning board to post a bond for the plants. We did have a meeting out there with Fuss and O'Neill. We went over all the as-built plans. They said there's a kind of things they would, they would like done. We said we agreed that we would do them. I've been at the seat, Karina, many, many times. I've told her that I'm going to be completely transparent when it comes to the plants. If we can't get exactly what's on the plan, we will come back to the planning board, Mrs. Latrell, Freddie Gillespie, and have a meeting. And once everybody agrees to what we can do to replace those plants, we'll move forward with it. But if there's something that we can't get, there'll be the first ones notified. You know, the building has been done for quite some time. We want to get somebody in there. And so again, I'm asking for the planning board to make a recommendation for the bond so we can get an occupancy permit based on the approved plans, based on the major site plan approval that is current.
Any questions or comments from the board? Back to that, to Mr. Quinn's request. Go ahead, Mrs. Holahan.
Um, I just want to get clarity. So the as-bills that were submitted on February 22nd to Fuss and O'Neill, this is what we're still waiting to hear back? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Um, is there any kind of guidance on when we're supposed to hear back from them? Because I, I think from my perspective, it's the stipulation that a temporary occupancy can be granted if there is no public health or safety issues. I don't have any confirmation of that in front of me in writing anywhere right now. And so I am not in a point where I feel comfortable to release that temporary occupancy. So that's my, my constraint.
Okay.
Personally.
Uh, may I ask a question, please? Karina, wasn't the as-built plan given to Fuss and O'Neill in January?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I have to just check my records. I don't have everything here at my house. Let me just look.
All of that is interesting and factual, whatever it is, but we're trying to move forward here with, with whatever we can do tonight. And it's apparent or clear that the planning board can continue the public hearing with no action. And I'll again go through the board and see if there's any comment back to Mr. Quinn's latest version of his request to really recommend temporary occupancy. Mrs. Holahan, you just spoke to that. Mrs. Latrell?
I'm in agreement with everything Mrs. Holahan said. And I think the as-bills were in the middle of February.
Mr. Stein.
Yeah, I, you know, going back to my previous comments, if it was just landscaping, I would entertain the notion of a bond and temporary COO. It's not just landscaping. I think we've established that. Thank you.
And Mr. Mills?
The appropriate bond, I'd be okay with entertaining, letting the temporary occupancy, but I think I'm outnumbered, so.
Don, just to answer the question that was lingering, so Fuss and O'Neill did inspection at the site on February 24th. An as-built had been submitted previously, but it was replaced with an updated as-built. When I received that updated as-built, it was provided to Fuss and O'Neill pretty quickly. So there may be confusion on the, on Mike's part as to which as-built was submitted and ready to go for consultant review. As it stands, the as-bills from my cursory look weren't complete in the sense that there was invert information missing. That's another reason they were revised and provided back. There were some pretty basic things missing. The final as-bills were missing some kind of correlation between the plantings and the plant table, which was copy of an invoice. So to speak of what was supplied, and I believe it was only a partial one. So at some point, I drew the line and I said, we're just going to take these as-built and send it in. And you, the proponent agreed that these were the ones they wanted me to submit for review. So you know, we're doing our best to get what's done with the information that's provided. And I'll just say that.
Mr. Quinn, three of the five members of the board want to continue this hearing with no action. And that would be a motion that I think is, is timely to hear and see how it goes, see how it's, it, how the board votes to continue with no action and continue it to April, would it be April 11th at seven fifteen? Is that right, Karina?
Yes, it would be April 11th at seven fifteen.
And hope that all of these loose ends on both sides get resolved so that we have a much quicker and more productive meeting on the 11th. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to April 11th at seven fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded any discussion. Hearing done. All in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holahan, yes.
Thank you all. I'm sure we'll be in touch, Mr. Quinn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Already took care of the A and R for 26 Middle, Meadow Lane. There was a discussion item for 17 Main Street Accessory Apartment. The proponent, St. Mark's, has withdrawn that application. If anyone has questions on them, ask or wants any details on that, you can ask now. Otherwise, we'll move on. We'll move on. Next item is a discussion item. It's Stonebrook Village, Stonebrook Court, Open Space. Last the town planner to update us on, on this discussion item.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I have to recuse myself from this item as I'm in a butter.
Thank you.
So just briefly, Stonebrook Village, which created Stonebrook Court, a private cul-de-sac roadway from a subdivision of three lots, two which became single family, and one lot became a 55 and over development with 15 townhouse units. I believe this project started before I became town planner. Sometime the project was, began construction 2016, so 17. The project has a open space area with certain restrictions. During construction, we had Fuss and O'Neill provide inspections for the project, which ended for a while. There is an outstanding as-built that we're waiting for. In the interim, you'll recall that Capital Group Properties came before us when Dan Ruiz was still with them and requested a change to some of the landscaping along the property lines to change to some Arbovayes there, which the planning board agreed with. Last year, open space inspection, Stonebrook Village was one of the properties, one of the projects that were included for Looks Environmental to take a look at the condition of the open space. See if markers were in place, any encroachments. And in that report, there were two locations that were picked up for open space encroachments. Earlier this year, sometime in January, Dan Ruiz, who represents, who does permitting for Capital Group Properties, approached me and said that they had determined they wanted to come before the board in order to discuss an encroachment that they had found. In that email response to him, I pointed out that in addition to the one he had found that there were these two others that were in the open space inspection report. And suggested that he take a look at that and, you know, get on an agenda. They requested to get on tonight to talk to the planning board about the status of that and how to mitigate that. Dan Ruiz has since left Capital Group Properties and Robert Di Petri, brother of Capital Group Properties owner, is here representing the request to discuss this, the open space encroachment with the planning board. In your packets, you saw that there were sketches of the open space encroachments, which included, I believe, a fence, portion of a fence, some stone wall, you know, boulder walls kind of simple boulder walls and wooden stairs that were built. It was a corner that was also encroaching. And so in order to move forward with their certificate of occupancy, not occupancy, what am I saying? There's a certificate of compliance from conservation that they were seeking. And it's at that point when the conservation agent recommended that they do come forward and, you know, approach the planning board. And that brings us to tonight. And that's, that's where we are.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Di Petri?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Hello, Bob.
How you doing?
I haven't seen, I don't think I've seen you since the last century.
Yeah, it's been a few decades, I think.
Yeah, the nineties when you were involved with the school, right?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, well, welcome back.
Thank you. As Karina said, there's two areas where there's an encroachment issue, one being behind unit five, where it looks like some retaining, a small retaining wall was built within the open space area as well as, is the split rail fence. And then the second area is behind unit 11 and 12, where the deck was built and then the stairs leading down to the ground from the deck approximately eight square feet of the stairs currently lie within the open space as it's currently delineated. So to that area in yellow, you can, you can see on the plan there.
Is that it, Bob?
Yeah, and, and just in looking at this plan, it seems like the, the split rail fence was sort of put in straight, whereas the the open space line sort of zigzags back and forth. If we wanted to get the, so the deck in compliance, there's areas to the north and south gaps between the open space line and the split rail fence, where we could pick up that area that's where it's encroaching with the stairways are encroaching on that, on that, in that particular area.
So what you're proposing is a trade-off. The areas of encroachment would be deleted from the open space and other non-open space areas would be added to the open space?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
And would that be on a two-to-one basis?
It looks like we could easily do that.
I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I'd be, that's, that would work for me if there was no opposition from the Open Space Commission or others. So could make that work. Thank you.
Mr. Stein?
Yeah, I'd be seeking the, if any, of the Open Space Commission on this proposal. Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Latrell?
She's recused.
Oh, that's right. Mrs. Holahan.
Um, yeah, I, I too would like to hear from Open Space. And I'd also want to make sure that it's in the same general vicinity as the rest of the open space versus just having like a plot of, you know, some land that's just randomly situated. So I think to make sure that it's a part of the continuous area. And is there a sketch of that? What you're proposing or where you're proposing?
Uh, we can provide that. I can have the engineer do a sketch up and, and get it to the board to take a look at.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
That'd be essential, yes.
Yep.
All set, Marty?
Yeah, and I, I don't know if, Mr. Di Petri, are you able to kind of show us whereabouts you're, or if you've already discussed it with Open Space?
Yeah, can we go back to the previous plan, Karina? So what I was thinking is if you look sort of on the north side of the deck there, there's a gap between the fence, which almost runs right along the back of the deck in that sort of a V-shaped area, which is the existing open space line there. And then again, to the south of the deck, there's another area. And it's just a matter of lining up the open space line more in line with the existing split rail fence on either side of that, and then pulling where the deck is out of the open space. So it would be minor adjustments on either side of that deck.
I see. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
All set, Marty?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Open space? Are you still here?
Hi there. This is Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. We haven't talked about this before this meeting, although I attended the site walk with Lucas Engineer. We haven't talked about this before this meeting, although I attended the site walk with Lucas Engineering and also the, for your open space monitoring report, but also we were required by the decision to find, make recommendations on locations for the required twenty winter berry shrubs, which with Joe's input, we were able to suggest there's a lot of invasives that are also required to be removed in the permit and the plant should go there. So I thought there was more than just this one encroachment. Am I mistaken there?
Uh, the second one is behind unit five. Where the, it's in the Lucas Environmental Report, it's on page one dot five, picture three. Shows where the second encroachment is.
Was there a recommendation on mitigation for that as well?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna have the engineer look at that and see if we can do a similar adjustment in that area as well.
Okay, and the square footage of these is not significant, correct?
Uh, correct.
So one of the, when we had the Open Space Commission talked about it in the past, but we haven't in preparation of this meeting. One of the concerns is you can put the open space and move it into an area that is just going to be encroached on by people using the landscape there. If it's flat and adjacent to, say, a patio, is, was that the case in the first one you had?
Yeah, so what the, what the good thing is here is the split rail fence is existing already, so people can't go beyond that. There's actually a gap between this split rail fence and the open space line. So by bringing that closer to the, to the, to the fence, it's not going to impact and people aren't going to be able to access it because it's on the, it's on the open space side of the fence.
For both, for both locations?
For behind eleven and twelve, and I've got to look at behind unit five to see where we can make adjustments there, so. When I submit the sketch, we'll look at that as well and keep that in mind and try and do the exact same thing over there.
So for tonight's meeting, you don't have a plan for both encroachments? We don't have a final plan?
Yeah, we just wanted to come and, you know, discuss it with the board and then have the engineer do up a plan if it seemed like this was a good idea.
So as the Open Space Commission hasn't spoken about this recently, I can't give a final input, but it would be nice to have the plan. Certainly if you're replacing, and you said two to one.
Yes.
I don't know if that was a joke or not, but I'm, I'm kind of laughing, but a replacement seems to be reasonable. And if it's in an area that could have encroachment, we might request some native plantings to go in.
Okay.
In addition, so what I would request is seeing a plan of the proposed mitigation replacements that I could then discuss with the Open Space Commission, so I could have a real official opinion. But we are nothing if not reasonable and would certainly accept a two-to-one replacement. I know this isn't big, but it's also the point of it, I think.
I understand.
And Bob, I don't know if we've met, I might have seen you at a hearing many years ago, but we'd be happy to work with you on, if you haven't finished the planting of the winter berry and the invasive removal as required in the permit, we could talk about that.
Okay.
When we talk about the mitigation, so thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, could you just be clear about the, the locations? Because to me, there were three encroachments. There was one at unit five. Is the sketch you're showing with the deck a location in the stairs with the yellow highlighted, that's unit eleven and twelve?
Yeah, on unit eleven, you had two issues. You had the fence. Part of the fence was within the open space and then
The rest of the stairs, right?
Yes, was the last issue there. So it's kind of in the same area.
Okay, and that was that, that was that unit?
Uh, that's unit that's unit twelve.
Okay, and then there was the other issue at unit five was the retaining wall with the split rail fence?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so two at unit eleven and twelve with the stairs in the deck and one at unit five with the boulder wall and the split rail fence?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, that picture is the unit, the one behind unit five there.
Yeah, the orange marker represents the, in the center of the picture represents the boundary line for the open space marker, a point.
So if everyone's all set, I'll try to see if we have the right understanding. Everyone's leaning toward a swap of open space to what has been the encroachment at a two-to-one. And that you would submit a plan that hopefully everybody can go along with. As opposed to the planning board recommending to the building inspector that those encroachments be removed. It doesn't seem like anybody wants to go in that direction, so. If there's no if anybody wants to add anything to that, please do, otherwise we'll expect Bob to come back with a plan. Go ahead, Karina.
Um, just one last factor is that the plan that's prepared should probably be recorded to show the open space restriction, because this was part of a subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, but not recorded until everybody agrees that it's
Yeah, once we get it finalized.
Yeah, yeah, once it's approved, but the final step.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Anything else from anyone?
Um, I have something else. Sorry.
Go ahead, yeah.
So Karina, you will put me in, I will send you an email and you can put me in touch with Mr. De Petri. And we can set up a time to get the plans and have a conversation if needed. That, and
That sounds good.
This most recent one you showed had the open space encroachment on the front side of the open space, so there'd be no area in that section to replace it with, correct? There's no open space behind the split rail fence you can swap it with because the open space is in front of the split rail fence. So that's just something to be aware of, where we're going to find it. Or where you're going to find it, excuse me.
Right.
But we're partners in this, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mills?
Just, Karina, can you pull up that, that plan again that we're looking at that showed the encroachment? I'm just curious, the, I know it was an as-built plan, it showed the deck in the wrong spot. Where it should have been, has that already been okayed, or is that something that we should be addressing at the same time, where it says approved deck location? And then it's in a red where a tree is. And the existing deck looks like twice the size on the other side of the building.
Maybe Bob can explain how that came to be, because it looks like there's a tree there now where the proposed approved deck location was.
Yeah, so my understanding is, and again, I wasn't involved in the building of these. What happened was the deck on unit eleven originally was in the, was on the back of the, of the unit, and then that had to get switched to the side of the unit. Because it couldn't be built on the back and then, which forced the deck on unit twelve, which was going to originally be on the side of the unit to get shifted to the back of the unit. And so that, that's what sort of led to this, that change there.
Just for the audience and everything, so that's already been addressed and that's not something we need to discuss this evening.
Correct, yes, the deck is, is existing there, was built years ago, yes.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next agenda item?
Uh, thank you.
Thanks, Bob, we'll, we'll wait to hear from you. Next item on the agenda is the tree bylaw, proposed warrant article. We'll start with Karina and then I think we're going to go to Mrs. Latrell when she comes back.
Okay, sorry, I'm back. All right, so Mimi Latrell prepared the draft tree bylaw and provided it to me last week and I was able to help her format it into code indexing and numbering format. And then we had sent it to town council for review. Town council had a few comments on that, which he redlined, a copy of which is in the Dropbox for review and Mimi and I discussed at length those comments earlier today and I believe the approach is to ask the planning board on a couple of the major comments, not major, but the more significant comments on how they felt about which way they should go. Uh, so Mimi, would you like to have us put that up on the screen? So Colleen, it's the in the Dropbox. The one that says town council at the end. Item number two.
Oh, I don't think I pulled up the right one.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that was formatted. Now we just need the second one down. That one, right there. Give it a second, it's trying to load. Now, there was one with some red. Can you show the balloons?
What do you mean, show the balloons?
On the side, so let me just show you something.
Review tracking?
Yeah, view tracking. Show markup. See the balloons, third one down?
Yep.
Top one, show balloons. Nope, go back. Show markup balloons, first one, show revisions in balloons. There we go. Now, as you scroll down, you'll see the comments. All right, so we want to go to the first page. All right, so that's funny, on my screen it's red, Colleen. I don't know why it's showing up blue. It makes it a little bit more tough to see.
Yeah.
Mine's blue.
Yeah, yours is blue. Hold on, one last quick check. I'm going to try and find something here. Just give me one second.
Colleen, it was almost easier to see it when it wasn't as blown up, where you could actually see the comment.
Yeah. Colleen's controlling that, so one second. Just want to see if I can get it to come up on mine.
I have mine up too, if it's easier, I can
Do you see yours in red?
I do.
Colleen, let Marnie launch hers.
Sure.
If you could. That would be helpful.
You should be good to go. Perfect, thanks. Do you see it?
We see your desktop.
Oh.
There, it's starting to show up on the right there. There it is, okay. Yep, that's the one.
Can you see it okay?
Yeah, that's much better. So, and, and just a point of note here. I did put a call into Jay Talam and town council earlier today, just to get some clarity on a couple of these comments. Because it wasn't quite clear. So Mimi, do you want me to continue and explain this? And you can jump in?
Sure, if you want to.
Okay, so his first comment was that, yeah, we had public shade trees, any tree within the boundaries of the public right-of-way, including scenic roads except for a state highway. At a distance of twenty feet or less from the layout of such public way. So in Mass General Law, chapter eighty-seven, section seven. Mimi pointed out to me that trees that are within twenty feet of a right-of-way can be public shade trees if the owner of the property on which this plan sits is in agreement and, and consents to that. So I think what councilman was saying here is that just to clarify, by adding, you know, after the word state, except for any tree within a public length, including scenic roads except for state highway. And also any tree at a distance of twenty feet or less from a layout of such public way. To kind of clarify that it's two different things we're talking about here. And we'll get clarity from him to make sure he didn't mean something more significant there. You'll see a couple of little comments here and there where he prefers the section symbol instead of the small letter S. Uh, these were minor just better choice of words, public right-of-way. And there was, is the strip of land, he changed it to a portion of land, because not all land, it's in the public right-of-way as a strip. Could be a different configuration. Controlled by the town within which an accepted public street, so clarifying that it's, you know, just to, the list. The roadway should be an accepted roadway, not just saying it's a public street. Down to South Road Tree Fund is a revolving fund approved by the town, so town council added this. It, it's my guess is because a revolving fund is used to take in money and then can be expended to apply to other things you want to use it for. We asked the treasurer about revolving funds and he said that they need to be approved at town meeting if you use that avenue. I also asked the treasurer, which I'm waiting for an answer, if the, if there were other types of funds that you can use that don't have to go to town meeting to store that kind of money, you know, in and out deposits and such. So the question's still out on that, and if anyone has a suggestion on that. All right, further down
Can I just add to the revolving fund thing?
Sure.
Being a plagiarist, I took this from another bylaw and assumed that it's been approved by the Attorney General's Office. The reason why a tree fund and not a revolving fund is that we wanted to make sure that it's used exclusively for the purchase and planting of public shade trees. And I know in the past, there's been great controversy over revolving funds in town being used for kind of as a slush fund, which I didn't want that to happen with this, so. Um, I have an issue with this being a revolving fund instead of a tree fund.
I concur, Mrs. Latrell. I, I don't think it should be a revolving fund. It has to be very dedicated. So I would agree that I wouldn't want the word revolving and that we would want another mechanism, because we don't necessarily have to have it approved by town. Or do we?
Well, it would be in someone's budget. It would show up in somebody's budget and the town would vote on that budget, budget line item or the whole, or the budget. But I also agree.
But I think that the town has to vote for a revolving fund, it has to vote specifically to create that fund. Whereas I think the tree fund can be within a budget that you vote for the budget, the town meeting doesn't need a separate vote for that fund particularly.
Yeah, it's basically a line item, right?
Yeah, I would think.
Yeah.
But if it's a line item, let's say whatever department and things change during the fiscal year, sometimes they're able to have the authority to, to realign funding from one line item to another. So it wouldn't. It wouldn't necessarily. If there was a thousand dollars in there for a certain fiscal year to plant trees. And it was a bad winter or whatever and they had to buy more salt. The five, the thousand dollars might be reduced to 500 and the other 500 go to buy salt. Depending on the department. Director's. Ability or authority to realign line items. Which isn't the end of the world, but it's. You know, that's, that's what happens with line items in certain budgets. They can be realigned.
And Karina, you had said you had asked somebody inside the town kind of accounting to see if there's a way to do this. Because I think if you can draw business rules around a tree fund, that it's exclusively for a tree fund. And maybe you just lose the money if, you know, or you hold the money.
Right, so we asked the original question to Brian Valentine, the treasurer, regarding revolving fund and what that means. And he explained to us about town meeting vote required for a revolving fund. Then. Town accountant is in training until Thursday. And we were hoping she could point us in a different direction because she, you know, all. The detailed type things go through her, so. Hopefully by the end of the week, we can ask her when she's back. And see what she comes up with. As opposed to a revolving fund. Maybe she has some other suggestions. Okay, so. Going down the page, just, yeah.
Does a hand up?
I think this is still a planning board discussion, Dawn, do we want?
Yeah, let's say, let's hold the, let's, let's get through this and then we'll open it up to, to comments. We gotta keep this moving.
Okay, here under tree warden. There were just some clarifying. Comments from town council that. The, under number two, tree warden shall be appointed by select and shall hold at least an associate's of science degree. Or related degree or demonstrated equivalent knowledge and experience. And although not required, it is he struck strongly and just said preferred. That the tree warden also hold a current Arbor certification. And have at least three years supervisory experience in commercial and municipal tree care and shall obtain a Massachusetts pesticide license. Town council wasn't sure about this, but Mimi indicated that it was a requirement. In, in the definition.
Um. Based on my son's experience, there are different.
Levels?
Levels of. Licenses relative to. Handling, application, mixing, all that stuff. So that, that may need a little bit of work as to what may be more specific to the Arbor end of plants. Or it may just, it may just say an appropriate. License, whatever, but there, there are. There's more than one Massachusetts pesticide license.
Just a point, my, I think, Dawn, your point that maybe we say it's a little bit broader, some sort of license. Because my, I imagine there's a job description or a role and responsibility associated with this job. That would go be well beyond this particular bylaw. For the personnel department to manage this person, whoever will be doing that. So we can add that specificity in that job description.
Yes, that's, that's a good, good way to handle it.
So you're saying leave it in as a broader term?
Yeah, I think so, because i- if this is truly a bylaw, we wouldn't want to have to update if all of a sudden all these things get updated by the state. Every time, so if we can do, kind of like the rules and regulations, it's like, I think specifics of which would be contained in a job description. Or something like that.
Oh, even more broad, not just specific pesticide license. You're saying qualifications as defined by.
Yeah, that's what, and then I think you can be a little bit more specific that way. That would be my suggestion, now that I've seen this and his suggestions for it.
Okay. Okay. Uh, number three, this has to do with the select board may appoint a deputy tree warden to perform the roles and responsibilities of the tree warden during vacation, sick time, etc. The deputy must have substantial experience and qualification and shall comply with all rules and obligations of this bylaw. That's probably just so that not just anybody can step in for three weeks or whatever. Is any objections to that one?
Just a spelling error, but.
Yeah. I saw that in qualifications, it's two C's. Alright, under D jurisdiction. These again were clarifying. Additions under two, this bylaw applies to all persons, agencies. And applicants either residing or conducting activities in the town of Southborough. Down to number three. Let's see here, if any public shade tree may be impacted by Construction Demo Excavation Act under the jurisdiction of Towns Billing Department Planning. Zoning or other town departments, the board. Number one. Or board, number one, the owner of the or applicant of the affected property. And any person engaging in such action should be required to comply with the provisions. And two, the owner and applicant. So that kind of speaks for itself. That's usually the case, owner and applicant. Anybody have questions on that one? Straightforward, okay, moving down. To.
Under planting new trees.
Planting new trees, yep. So Mimi and I discussed this a little bit today, part C there, the petitioner shall execute a release in favor of the town. So this part responds to, relates to. If somebody wants to, to plant a tree in a public way, not on their private property. They can request to do so through this path. Described here in number one and two, and we weren't really clear on the last. Item there, the petitioner shall execute a release in favor of the town. And I thought this might mean. The town, once the tree is planted and paid for by whoever wants it planted there. The town then gets ownership of the tree. This is my thought on this. That later if the top, the tree becomes a problem, the town can opt to trim it or cut it or. Whatever, move it. That the owner, that the purchaser relinquishes his right over the tree. Because it's now on town property, so that's a question we'll get clarification from town council.
You have that in your definition of a public shade tree though, too, is that 20 feet? And you know, it's kind of believed that it'd be in the town. We just talked about at the very beginning. I wonder if you somehow referenced. The, the public shade tree definition and this falls within that. But that, the way that you just said that, Karina, makes perfect sense, that once it's planted, they, they say, okay, now it's the town's responsibility.
Right, yeah, so within 20 feet of the pub, of a public right of way is on private property. And they control that regardless. It's just counted as a public shade tree, but they still need to get some.
Oh, I see.
Permitting if they affect that tree, once they consent that it's a public shade tree. But it's on their property. In this case, it's a tree that a private entity wants to put on a public property. It's kind of the reverse of that.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, it took me a while to understand that this morning. Okay, as we move further down, this is process to request public shade tree pruning or removal. Again, this references a tree fund. And I believe town council is saying that if you don't have a tree fund, which takes. Is a revolving fund according to his comment and requires town meeting approval. That it would be premature to put a tree fund in the bylaw now. Because we don't, if you want to pass this, you don't have a revolving fund yet, so I'm not sure how that works. And then we'll find that out when we talk to the accountant, if there's another avenue. There's a couple typos in there as well. Terms of shell, H. Public hearing. So, other than the minor clarification there. At the end, publishing a newspaper of general circulation in Southborough. And we recognize that town council. Is probably much more state of the art and the types of things that he does through his work. Unfortunately, Mass General Law, I believe, still requires that it gets published in the newspaper. The way it's described, so we'll talk to him a little bit more about that. He might just be making comment in general, like. Because I don't like, Mimi and I were saying, you know, we probably wouldn't, you know, request legislature to be changed for this. We just follow the rules that MGL. States, which is to publish in the newspaper. And keep going down, here we are at section two. J, tree replacement. Just a little clarification under appeals. Number two, right at the top of the page, that's just to make sure that after the select board. Makes a decision on the appeal, that some form of decision is filed with the town clerk. So that there's record of it. So there's no question later. Under item J here, tree replacement. Again, it references or payment to a tree fund of an amount deemed suitable for the planting of the two trees, so. Where it was originally proposed that you, two trees for everyone. That you take out. He added a comment here that there should be, maybe in lieu of the two trees, you can provide. Compensation. In the form of money for the two trees into a tree fund. Alright, keep going, emergency tree removal. This is in regards to the tree one may remove without public interest, it's a term, but. Qualified by training, it has a determination, okay, so. What? I, in discussing with Mimi, both of us agreed that we weren't on board with this. Added comment, because what it does is it opens it up from, here it's saying that. The tree warden has to follow this type of Arbor rating for rating a tree. But then the comment added opens it up that. The tree warden can also pick any other way that he wants to determine the tree, and I think. In retrospect, that's probably the big concern that we're starting with. That there, the, the defined way of which a tree is considered hazardous. So this particular comment. I believe, Mimi and, tell me if I'm wrong, you felt that that was inappropriate, that we shouldn't, not inappropriate, but it wasn't the path we wanted to take. That it was too open, okay.
I'd like a vote to strike that. I think that just is exactly what it's doing. It's negating anything else.
Right, which the purpose of the bylaw was to tighten up. This amongst other things, yeah.
Okay. Moving on, we go down to part M enforcement. And. I believe this has to do with. How much the. Penalty is. And Mimi's original draft had in there, it was up to $500 per. What do you call it?
Offense.
Offense, yeah, per offense. So we could add that back in there if that's the amount.
No, I, no, I think he's saying that. The fines have to be stated in the tree wardens regulations. Not, he, he wanted the, the dollar amounts removed from this code section. Because every time you, you want to change the amount, you have to get a town meeting vote. But if you have the, the amount of the fines in the tree wardens regulations. Then those tree warden regulations can be revised without town meeting vote. So his, his comment is relative to the regulations, not to this code.
Oh, okay.
Alright, that's the reverse of what we were thinking. Okay, we thought he wanted that you specifically had to state an amount in the code.
No, we keep, yeah, matter of fact, I think. Somebody at our last meeting said something about that because.
Yes, Mr. Lit.
A $50 fine. You know, 20 years ago is a lot of money, now it's still a lot of money, but not as much.
Right, which is why I removed the amount.
Right, so we just make sure that there's. Tree warden regulations that contain the amounts.
Okay. Okay, makes sense. And that's it. So some good points there, a clarification. So Mimi and I can probably work out these fine details based on the feedback from planning board tonight. If you'd like us to, you know, take care of that and update the draft.
Yeah, and then put it, put the new version up on the, on the town website.
It's terrific. You guys have just done a really nice job, so thank you very much for leading the charge here.
Well, it's all Mimi. She did the, the grunt work and I thank her for that.
The plagiarizing.
Hey, us to plagiarize and create a new.
Well, that's, that's what all the towns do and they, and they're encouraged to do that. Because what's in other towns' codes has already been cleared with the Attorney General and. Apparently a working success in some other towns, so why not? Why not try it here?
Point out, yeah, we, we. Posted the public hearing for this to open on March 28th. So it's running in the newspaper two prior Mondays and then on March 28th, it will open. At seven o'clock. At the planning board meeting.
And that's, that meeting is limited to. That public hearing?
Yes.
And is the scenic road also the 28th?
Correct, at 7:05.
So, and that's, at this point in time, the only items on the agenda for the 28th.
Yes, and Miss, and Jesse has already indicated he, he'll be away on that night. He'll be away on vacation. But we can do a Mullins form. For you, Jesse.
Whoever, if there's nothing else from the board, we'll. Go to Tim. Is that the only hand up, Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to comment on the tree fund questions that, that you had been talking about. I don't pretend to be an attorney, I'm not going to compete with Jay. But I have dug into revolving funds before and sort of how that works. So Tim's thumbnail version goes like this. The advantage of a revolving fund is that whatever is in it carries across fiscal years. So, you know, like a standalone article, money that goes in. This fiscal year can be used next year, the year after that. As long as, as you need it, and for things like trees, that seems like a good idea. It is the case that town meeting has to establish the fund, and I'll get back to that in a second. But the other thing that's important is that, with respect to your discussion, is that when a fund is established, you state the purposes for which it can be used. And the issue in the past has been that certain other revolving funds have had a broad definition of what they can be used for. And they were perceived to have been used for things not anticipated when the fund was set up. The way that a fund is, is actually set up is that. An action of town meeting. Specifies an amendment to a table that's buried in the town code. That lists the town's revolving funds, the purposes for which they can be used, and how money can be removed from, from the fund. And then there's a standard article in every warrant that set, every annual warrant that sets the limit of how much money can be withdrawn from the fund. In the, going up. It seems to me that since you're, since you have an article on the warrant with respect to, you know, the management of trees. With respect to, you know, the management of trees that would use a fund. That you could certainly consider adding a section. To this article. That makes the table modification and creates the fund. So you don't have to wait and you don't, you know, you can do it all as one. All in one. But you would need to uh, talk with the finance team. About amending the other, the standard article to establish an initial limit. On the fund. And that's about as simple as, as, as I can make it. So I don't think you need to be scared of revolving funds if. In establishing the fund, you're very clear that, you know, it can only be used for, you know, planting trees. And nothing else. Or planting trees and inspecting trees or planting and maintaining whatever. Boundaries you want to set. I think you can, you can safely do that. And not worry about creating something else and, and all those complications. So that's, that's my two cents and I hope it's helpful.
Thanks, Tim.
I think it's very helpful, Tim. Thank you.
Oh, and that's why I raised my hand when I did because I thought it was on topic.
Next time, maybe we'll um. Stop where we are and listen to you, Tim. Go ahead, uh. Marnie.
Yeah, so um, I know it's a discussion and I know that we had also received some correspondence from um, resident Deb de Muria just around the um. Kind of the DPW oversight board and kind of pulling that back in again. I didn't know if that's. Part of this discussion or we put it for the tree warrant. Discussion once it's a public meeting.
Correct. Karina and I discussed this uh, earlier today and. Um, we, we should um. Probably not talk more about it tonight. Let the uh, let Deb's. Letter be read by the selectmen. Um, and the DPW planning board. Uh, and ask. When we send that to them, ask them to um. Be prepared to discuss it either before or during the uh, public hearing. It definitely uh, the reference to the Wayland uh, tree board and the Wayland uh. Uh, DPW, uh, I think they're called something different, but. Now that, that may be an excellent example of how to move forward with this if. If the town has. You know, a serious uh, commitment to. Managing the public shade trees. But um, yes, we did get the letter. A lot of hard work went into it, it seems. And um, we'll share it with. Selectmen and the um. DPW planning board. And hopefully they'll, they'll. Tune in uh. Before or during the uh, March 28th hearing. Anything else?
Thanks, Marnie. Bringing that up.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item. Scenic Road Proposed Warrant Article. This one seems to be a lot simpler. Although what we have on the website needs um. The presentation materials are still uh. In the works and um. Will be uh, hopefully. Greatly improved uh, to explain. To the public. The concept of scenic road and the uh. Benefits of what we're trying to do.
And just to be on the same page that we won't be referencing a particular code. Um, location for this, it's going to go through as an article. If the planning board has a consensus. Um, as the other ones did. So draft two is the one that is the preferred version where the streets are listed out. Which represents streets um, after 1978 up to current. 2022. And then there's the background. That we spoke about at prior meetings of the prior articles. And appreciate um, Debbie de Moria's. Um, research in finding the 1978 article. That was extremely helpful. And then these are um. Kind of a Q and A. Provided.
Yeah, and I'll be uh. Updating and improving uh, hopefully this last slide so that um. Maybe if nothing else, a little bit more eye catching. Any questions or comments?
Will you be wanting this in as a handout, Don?
Um.
For more of a slide?
I think it, it would be a slide. I had a talk with uh, Mr. Semino. Week or 10 days ago and um, they had. It was shortly after they uh. Said that they were going to use Algonquin for the town meeting. And I think when I spoke with him, it was unclear. As to whether the um. The location in the school was going to be the auditorium or the gym. I think the cafeteria is too small. But I think that was still a matter of discussion. But I think he indicated that there would be um. You know, presentations, there would, there would be electronic slides like we usually do. At uh, when we're at Tradiar. So that's what this would be a slide.
Okay. We'll help you too, if, if you need it.
It'd be kind of um. Hard to uh, ask the people to um. Pass this and in the hopes of saving trees and then we wind up having a. Couple thousand paper handout. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item. Which is the.
Just have one con.
Yeah, go ahead. Mimi.
Um, just, I wanted to note that. Although the scenic roads isn't a specific bylaw, so. Hopefully we don't lose track like we did before. It's under the um. Duties and responsibilities of the tree warden and the tree bylaw to keep track of the scenic roads. To have a, a list of all scenic roads.
And hopefully that'll be a new list after uh. After this town meeting. MBTA Communities Discussion. Uh, the draft letter that we uh, had in our emails. Um, any questions, comments on that?
Don, in our discussion today, I just wanted to clarify, I spoke with conservation agent Melissa Danza just to confirm um. Uh, protected buffers from riverfront and it is, it's 200. And it's set like a 100 with very restrictive. Buffer and then an additional 100 feet where you're allowed certain things like septic systems and such, but it is a 200 foot buffer.
Okay. Uh, when I looked at it, I just thought that there, there could be um. People that are reading it may, maybe more tuned into housing than they are to um. The restrictions of other state. Laws relative to wetlands. And of course, we have the. The river right next to the train station and then wetlands and. Uh, stream, so um. Maybe the letter's fine the wa- the way it is. I ju- just didn't know if there was more. Stronger language relative to um. You know, the uh, particular environment that's right near the train station.
You mean like an emphasis of?
Well, I mean, if somebody looked. If somebody looked at all the, the resources, wetland resources and then compared that to the restrictions. It may, it may further uh. Strengthen the town's um. View that uh. This is going to be very, very difficult to do. We didn't. You know, a train station's been there. Well, those tracks have been there for a long, long time, long before these laws. There's nothing else, then we'll move on to other business.
Mr. Chairman, real quick. Uh, Karina, is this the same draft? That we discussed. At Shopsey. Few days ago?
The draft letter?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just can't recall. I think there's been only one letter drafted that was released. Um.
Okay. Cause this was a discussion item.
Yes.
At Shopsey and. I just can't remember if Karina, if um, Dorian had a different. Draft, so.
I don't think she had a draft yet because Mimi had just released it after.
Oh, you're, you're right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Well, um, actually I. Sent it to her prior to the, to on uh, Wednesday night, she got it.
Oh, so she might have had. I just can't remember if that's. It's only one letter right now, right, Mimi? It's only one letter that's circulating.
Yeah. So.
I just, yeah, thanks. It's just that I don't think that Shopsey has discussed this yet. In this form, that's all. That's it. Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Chairman?
This is Latrell.
So is it your suggestion that um. There's more language regarding the environmental effect, effects and the wetlands added into? The letter?
Well, I felt, I felt that way um. When I was talking to Karina this afternoon and. Uh, wasn't sure if conservation. Had uh, contributed to the letter at all. And so. Just now, Karina said that she, she was able to speak to conservation. Uh, relative to the. My specific question about the Rivers Act. So uh. If conservation hasn't looked at the letter. Maybe you might ask them to um. Look at it. And see if there's additional language that could be added to strengthen. The um. Impact. Strengthen the reader's understanding. Of the impact of being so close to the river.
Okay.
Now, they want, they want us to build things near the station. And yet, in order to do that, we may be violating. Or prevented by another state law. You know, they might say, well. We don't care about your town regulations. But they should, they shouldn't require us. To do things that violate the state law. I used to know a lot more about this stuff, but I've been away from it for a while. And of course. Melissa, you know, she knows all about it. So have, has conservation looked at the letter?
No, it was um. A representative from Shopsey from the select board and myself.
Yeah, this is. So many different rules. And laws relative to those, to the river and the wetlands that. And it's technical. That. Also, the readers may not understand, but if conservation can bring. Their attention to cer- those certain things, it may strengthen our position.
I'd be happy to reach out to Melissa.
Yeah. Karina, did you get the feeling that Melissa would be happy to be reached out to?
Yes.
She always is.
Yep, and she's always quick to return a very thoughtful response.
Anything else on MBTA? Move on to the planners report.
Mr. Morris, I just wanted to say thank you for Mrs. Latrell, um, again, supporting us as well as Karina. Appreciate stepping up. To represent us.
Second. Okay. Um. Planners report. I'll let Karina. Start on this. I have to go get my uh. Power cord. I was hoping to uh. Get this meeting done on my battery, but be right back.
Alright. Um. Bring up the um. Just general things um, until Don gets back. Um. Let's see here. Um. There's a warrant article number 28. Sponsored by the select board that has to do with rules and regulation. Procedures. And I just wanted to make sure that you all saw that email of um. Now Andrew Dennington provided, that kind of explained um. What article 28 was going to be. You can see here, it's to see if the town will um. Vote to amend, um, the bylaw shall apply to any multi-member. Board that may be defined as a public body. Um. Prior to adoption of any rules and regs, whether pursuant to state law or local bylaw, such a public body shall hold a public hearing with respect to. Um, such public hearings should be. Noticed. Um, so these are types of things um. Related to. It looks like open meeting law. And ensuring that those things happen. So it's not real clear to me yet at this point what this refers to. Um. But I know there was a question previously of what this was as a warrant article. Still a little fuzzy to me. So if anyone has any. More knowledge to enlighten me on this. I'm open for that. I think Tim Lit has his hand up. Probably very familiar with this.
Well, I've stuck my nose in this one, so if it helps. Um. This is something that Andrew Dennington has proposed um, to make sure that. And I don't think it applies as, as much to the way you work as it does to others, but. Uh, when a board or committee promulgates rules, currently there's no requirement that the public. Uh, get notice of them.
Yes.
Um, and this has happened, for example, with historical where rules have been promulgated. But there hasn't necessarily been enough notice in Andrew's opinion. So this is intended to uh, close that gap. Um, I've, I've made some comments on this and I know that, that, that other people are, are looking at it. I don't think it will be in exactly this form. But that's the intent.
Thanks. So what you're saying is that to ensure that public hearing takes place. Um, when, when a board or, or committee provides uh, rules and regulations to be.
Yes, so for example, you know, if the Board of Health um, decides to do something about cigarette sales or historical about demolition or. You know, anybody. I mean, you have, as, as, as he says in the third part here, you know. There is legislation that requires you to hold formal public hearings. And in that case, he's saying, well, you just combine them. He's really trying to cover the case where people are changing fines or, you know, any of the other things I mentioned. Uh, and just to make sure that the public. Gets notice and gets a chance for input.
Okay, thanks.
I'll add it to your bill.
Also, Karina on that, any questions?
Um, so any opinion on how that would affect the planning board?
Well, I think that we typically, oh, go ahead, Don.
Yeah, no, we usually, if we have, if we go into any of our regulations, we. We do it in a public. We do it in a public meeting. Don't have, don't, don't necessarily hold a hearing, but we. We would put it on the agenda and then go over it. My experience, my memory is telling me that when we do that. Uh, over the years, um. It's usually not just accomplished in one night. It's put on the agenda, we discuss it. Gets bounced around. Sometimes it gets kicked to the next meeting or even the next meeting before the final. Set of uh, regulations are um. Uh, you know, voted on by the board. Uh, I think um. It, it, it would probably apply to us, but the way we've been doing business forever is. Putting things on the agenda. And um. Let, letting the people see what we're trying to do and. Invite their input.
I think it would apply to the tree warden regulations, by the way.
Yeah.
Right, and in. And in fact, that the, the tree bylaw and the scenic road bylaw are general bylaws. Um, they don't require public hearings and we're, the planning board's holding public hearings on those. For this specific reason.
I'm not criticizing your practice. I'm just trying to help, help you understand. I'm not criticizing your practice, I'm just trying to help, help you understand what Andrew is trying to do.
Oh, no, that's good, I appreciate that, I was just pointing out that we are following it now too, even with these two specific general bylaws.
Well, I think if I remember right, this, this requires a notice, you know, in a newspaper or the town website or something like that, specific to the rules that are being issued. So it's a little more than what you're currently doing, but not a lot.
I think the last time we did this, correct me, Jesse, was the um regulations for the um solar.
Wow. So that's what, nine years ago, approximately?
Illumination.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, illumination, yeah. But all of those involved uh public hearings that referred to and let the public know that there was a set of regulations that we would be voting on. Any other questions on that, comments, move on to the next, go ahead, Karina.
Yes, um, the annual town meeting uh opening on May fourth, does the planning board want to have a pre ATM meeting at five thirty at the school in person to discuss any last minute warrant article?
Are you saying that that's, that's a dry run?
No, no, that, the annual town meeting is May fourth, and usually the planning board holds an hour, like a, a, a planning board schedules a meeting one hour before the eight, the town meeting in order to have some final discussions. So I'm just checking if the planning board wants me to hold the same procedure as we've done in the past, schedule a room over at Algonquin.
We still have time to decide on that, right?
Yeah, just food for thought.
Yeah, well, we'll see if something compels that, otherwise, we'll probably just show up.
Okay, um, I wanted to point out that I sent you um the sad news that Russell Millholland had passed. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. I believe
He was uh he was probably most known for his incredible work on the Personnel Board, but he's also a former Planning Board member.
Okay, so we're sorry to hear that. Um, two more items. Um, the EDC has approached me today, and um they typically cover the cost of the four ninety-five Metro West Partnership uh annual dues, which is five hundred dollars, and um Marek asked me today if it was possible, or if the planning board was interested in assisting uh with some of that payment this year, as um in the past, a couple of years ago, when there was a transition, um, you know, the EDC has always carried that cost. Uh, Planning Board assisted one year because in the transition, it got missed in the budget somehow, so um you know, she just asked if we were interested in contributing or covering it, if they have some money to maybe split that. Um, if not, they would go to the Select Board and um ask for covering that cost. So I figured I'd let the board decide if they wanted me to take that out of the fiscal year twenty-two budget um that we have. Um, I believe we could at least in part assist, but um, like I said, if we are not able to, then they would ask the Select Board for assistance.
Andrew.
Uh, I'd be in favor, let's see how the Select Board uh, what their position is first before we help out.
Anyone else? Kind of felt the other way that um you know, one hand, you know, over the years, we've been uh providing some pretty good support to um the open space uh with a line item in our budget for those inspections. And we could drop that at any time, but we kind of want to do that, and so we do it. And now with the EDC, we want to make sure that it doesn't become an annual thing. But sometimes budgets, no matter how big or small, uh, things happen and they uh might need a little help, uh, and if we're able to do that, maybe it would leave uh, would show the other boards uh that if you can do it, then, then help, help the others out and uh and work it more as a team. It's, it's not big money, but it's just a, something that we could do and would be simpler than probably going to the selectmen and
It would be a minor for
That's the way I feel.
Yeah, if we agree to split it too, we could do that, and wouldn't impact planning budget as much.
Oh, yeah, whatever they have for money, they should use, but if it's not enough, then if we're able to help them
Supplement.
That's the way I feel. But Andrew makes a very good point, um. I just think it's an opportunity for us to be a a team player and to show others, other boards um that they could do the same at some point.
Uh, I agree with that, Mr. Mills, uh, I would, my inclination would be to uh let uh EDC go to the Board of Selectmen uh for that resource, thank you.
Okay, who's next?
I'll go. Um, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I think that the uh four ninety-five partnership is more of a planning uh geared entity, so I would, I would agree with you.
And Marnie's the tiebreaker.
Um, well, my, I was going to go exactly where Mimi was going, I think the four ninety-five is something that we should have um a vested interest in. So I would vote for giving them a little, and they should also still go to the Select Board.
For this year only, correct? We, we, we're just assisting this year, right? Because they usually carry it.
Yes.
So Mr. Stein and Mr. Mills will remind us later that no good deed goes unpunished.
That's exactly what went through my mind just now, thank you.
Well said, Karina, on that one.
Yes, I'll take care of that, thank you.
Next item.
Um, lastly, um as you know, with the recording clerk policy and the reduction, um, the, the new policy having uh many of the boards and committees have their own um member do the recording clerk services, um the treasurer, in conjunction with um town administrator, asked that um we remove the Shopsey cost and the master plan cost for recording clerk um, which resulted in thirty-six hundred dollars, so um what I view that as is an opportunity to allocate a couple of other items under contracted services that would help um you know, supplement the initiatives we have going there, which we previously trimmed down in order to meet um you know, the, the demand for the meeting minutes to be prepared. Um, so Dawn and I talked about this a little bit, and um I had shown everybody the fiscal year twenty-three budget that we prepared for planning and submitted. Um, the bottom line would stay the same, uh, but a couple of changes and adjustments that we made were to um increase the open space monitoring amount by somewhat, um, and then also provide a line item for contracted services to assist with updating of the zoning map when that happens. So it won't cover the complete cost of the zoning map update, but it will help planning um to meet that, you know, help with that requirement, whatever services that will come up that would be imparted on the planning department, we could use some of that funding to offset that. Um, so it's kind of a wash, we moved the uh Shopsey and master plan reporting clerk amounts and divvied it into the open space um monitoring, which has been a success, as we see tonight with Stonebrook Village, and how I only see that improving, we'll, we'll see other things like that, and as people become more aware, um, they'll bring that to the forefront and we can mitigate some of that, and it was a pretty simple way to solve that today. Um, but I think those minor adjustments, again, the bottom line's the same, the budget bottom line has not changed. Um, so I'm looking for the planning board to, if they support that change, then I'll be submitting that tomorrow morning for the Board of Selectmen's meeting tomorrow night. Okay?
Yeah, that uh, the open space piece is just bringing it closer to, to where it used to be, and we can see that that's a success. So that amount is not a world's record by any, by any means, it's just moving it back up to uh, a range where we, we were doing that. And then, as Karina said, the um, the zoning, updating of the zoning map or an, an official town map, there are pieces of that that are um more under um planning. More of our records may be needed to uh make that work, so uh, we, if there's a consultant, for example, there's a consultant that's going to actually do uh an updated zoning map, we actually may need to hire a, another consultant to extract the type of information from our files to support that other consultant. And um, so it, it's anticipating something that will probably happen, but it isn't quite clear yet. Uh, but it's a, it's a real good uh realignment of the funds without going over what we had originally uh submitted. So I saw all thumbs up except Jesse. There it is. Also, Karina, you, good to go on that?
Thank you, thank you for that support.
And anything else on the Planner's Report?
No, I, I believe um, I did put a copy of the current warrant up on the Planner's Report, so that if you needed access to it quickly, you could see it there in reference, um. They're getting regularly updated um and emailed out, so everyone can see that, the draft warrants.
Hey, Don, can we just back up to what you started off the beginning of the meeting about, was the uh going back in person in the townhouse? So, did I interpret that correctly, Karina, that there is to be no in-person meetings until they, the selectmen vote sometime in July? Is that right?
I think that they were going to address it at a Select Board meeting in mid to end March to determine if they would open it up to in-person meetings by choice.
Okay.
So I haven't heard, there's been no formal email circulated to department heads that indicates other, other than July fifteenth, we can, until July fifteen, we can continue Zoom meetings, and that's from state emergency order or state legislation. Soon as I hear any update, I'll um circulate that email.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next item is the uh approval of minutes, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, make a motion, we approve the minutes from uh February twenty-eighth, is right.
Second.
Motion made in second. Motion's been made in second at any discussion. Hearing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell.
Hulahan, yes, well done, Kate.
Okay, uh, our next meeting, March twenty-eighth, which is two public hearings. Um anything else from the board or the public?
I, I won't be able to attend that meeting on the twenty-eighth either at this point, but um Colleen is doing a great job facilitating, she's also um staying um up to date with all the things that are happening, so she'll be able to um address the questions that come up and assist. I will help prepare, I'm just not sure I can be there that evening.
Isn't it three public hearings at the next one? Because we have the base. Isn't it Ken's?
No.
Oh.
Only the bylaws, only the warrant articles.
Okay.
No, we continued the uh other public hearings to April eleventh.
Oh, sorry.
We wanted to keep um um, March twenty-eighth as a focused meeting on pu, the public hearings for the warrant articles. And if you guys remember, I think that meeting was inserted. As another additional meeting that the uh Planning Board is, is gonna, gonna do. And it's out of respect for the uh the proposed warrant articles.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second at any discussion. Hearing that all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes?
Hulahan, yes.
Or adjourn, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good to see everybody.
Thanks, Colleen.
Good night, Colleen.
Thank you.